For August fifth at six zero one P M. We have all councilors present and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, on its ancient underground individual with liberty and justice.
Here we go and get started and we're going to start off this evening with two items. First of all, let's see, recinting of our acting employees. Item meeting team, we are looking at the regulation of Nelson McGee. He has worked last month work of mark forty years of working for the town transfer station. And so tonight if you want to recognize him and thank him for his service and dedication right now. Thank you also.
What's this all?
All us.
Alright.
Yes. We get everyone in. I went sort of.
How many decisions?
Yeah, let's go. Let's turn it around. Turn around.
From center.
Everyone?
It's all us.
Alright.
Andy, should I be sitting there a little closer? Alright, you guys look over here, over here Nelson. Say chainsaw Nelson.
Thank you so much.
So I have a thought.
Yeah, and it was about Nelson, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I just want to say, I think for why you will miss Nelson at the transfer station, not that I've been there a lot lately. He always cheered me up and everything and I love that, but thank you, thank you for all the news Nelson.
You can't be here, you can't be here.
Yeah, I just want to say something.
Absolutely.
I just want to say it's a pleasure seeing you every time I go to the transfer station. You're always cheerful and you make the trip enjoyable, so nothing it should be, but. Thank you for everything.
Yeah, and also that everyone to state that you recognize this person.
Yes.
We have a little bit of thank you. Alright, we're going to move on to our item one eight. We've got an employee that is retiring and that is Matt, our couple of works director. He's there for over thirty three years in service in his town, so I want to say thank you and congratulations on your retirement. Pulling up now. Nelson.
Yeah.
She's saying what she's wanting to do.
Do we have?
You're a good guy. Roy, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm gonna hug her.
Go ahead, go ahead, you're hurting my nose.
Alright. Give him a good side. Turn around. Alright, there we go. Thank you.
There any other things you want?
Oh, I know.
They used to work parents when they own vehicles.
Oh, geez.
They would keep them to get all the work jobs on the side.
Thank you. Interesting. That's mine.
The next person I meet that doesn't love Nelson will be the first person I meet that doesn't love Nelson. And so, uh, don't give them any ideas personally. We want you here for another four years at least. And I said the other night about Matt, a little going away story, that I feel a little cheated because I only got to work with Matt for a year. And he's been very generous to me with his time and expertise. But more importantly, I mean, when you think about the level of commitment that he's made to the town of Winthrop for the last thirty plus years.
Thanks.
Snowing for a lot of snow for hours upon hours on end. And, you know, doing the best with the resources that he had available to him to help improve streets and so forth. It's the community knows him a huge step up around him, so it's been a pleasure working with both of these guys. And we have in the back, we're going to break down just for a few moments of cake and punch and some going away party gifts for those you guys.
At that time, we'll go ahead and break until six twenty and congratulate you so much. Thank you. Alright, thank you very much, everybody. We're going to move on to item one eight. Discussion and consideration of the heritage of the heritage of council. Now we've received a proposal from a committee that has come together. I'm president of, um, Priscilla Jenkins, Jim King is the chair, Jennifer Phillips, Kathy Ward, Sherry Dwyer, and Linda Easterbrook. Looking at a proposed Heritage Day or a Blue is Labor Day weekend. And we received a packet. And so at this time, I would ask if there's anyone in the council that has any questions. We do have a majority of the council in the audience and if they'd like to come up and discuss that proposal.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I want to thank you for having me present this proposal that we have put together. I'm really proud to say that I've been working with a great group of people that I would like to just mention. And that is Jennifer Phillips, Priscilla Jenkins, Kathy Ward, Linda Easterbrook, and Sherry Dwyer. And they're the people who make up the Winter Heritage Day Committee. We are proposing the Winter Declare Saturday and Wednesday weekend as an official holiday to celebrate the heritage of Winter, our people, and history. That is the proposal, the salient fact is that we want to make it an annual holiday. And in your packet, we presented, you know, several inherent documents and outline of the tasks that have to take place. A winter and cognitive recall as well as a budget. Budget is a projected, anticipated budget only for this particular year. And we will learn as we go and make it bigger, make better, defend in the future that I think we can all be really proud of. I would like to say that last year we had a pretty successful event with a minimum amount of resources allocated to the, uh, event day. It was an outgrowth of the Sestersen Tenon, and that is where the idea for this was inspired from. So Priscilla Jenkins is going to talk a little bit about our vision and some other things. And then Jennifer Phillips is going to talk a little bit about the community support that we have and a few other things. I have, uh, one thing to say about that. It's not really an official part of the presentation, but I do have some copies of the proposal that have been signed by members of the community. We have, I don't know how many signatures, not a lot, that mostly happened when I walked up and down the street and we costed and made a nuisance out of myself. But, uh, you know, a little way it paid off. And so we can pass this around and if you'd like to take a look at it. It's not anything of any real significant consequence, however, it does show that we have some support in the community as well. So, uh, with that, I would like to take, you know, Priscilla or how Priscilla present a little bit about their vision. Thank you.
Yeah, let me address this. You'll see many people who just stated last year did sign on that. It's kind of a case of, um, yeah. So I just want to say, bringing this town together, bringing this town together, whoever we are, as long as I'm trained. On a council, I vote for many things like solving damn problems and adult ed, which serves so many of our young adults. And as I'm campaigning, campaigning when I was in the mode of the big campaign, I heard folks wanted to change our mixed community from labor based to better community based. And I think the economic diversity is enriching and needed. And all share the blessings of this community. And this event is for everybody, professional, non-professional, just everybody who lives in town. That's all I really want to say. Thank you.
For those that do not know me, my name is Jennifer Phillips. I moved to this community in the fall of two thousand nineteen, but ever since I was a child, I referred to Winter Main as my home. You see, my mom grew up on the cotton farm on Old Lewis and Road. So to me, before I went here, Maine was my central. Before moving here, I lived in two different communities, both larger than the status of Portland, Maine. But all had that small town feel to them. And that's something I looked forward to when I moved here. In both communities, I was active in many events, large and small, public and private. Additionally, for my career, I have over twenty five years of meeting planning, hospitality, and customer service experience. I was taught to give back and to be proud of where you come from. In this community, I am an active member of the Winter Main Historical Society, serving on their board. The Winter Range number two oh nine. My son is a member of the Winter Scout Troop six oh four. And I am an active member and deacon at the Winter Congregational Church. The reason why I'm telling you all these things is because not only am I involved on the Winter Heritage Day Committee. I plan to be a part of the operations team that builds this into a successful event. It is for all these reasons why I'm standing here to speak to you today. And to bring Winter Heritage Day to the community because I feel it is important to bring people together, to form unity between individuals that may live beside each other, but don't know each other. Or those that know each other but haven't talked to each other for a while. I believe in making life fun and having a fun event that the town can look forward to each year that is supported by the town and for the towns. I look forward to the opportunity to allow local nonprofits to use this event as a fundraiser for their organization, be it selling ice cream or other organizational items that helps women survive, or maybe having a silent auction at their booth. I think it's important to provide a place where all of that happens and we can continue to improve upon it based upon citizen feedback each and every year. We want Winter Heritage Day to be a festive occasion that many people within the community will enjoy. I have been actively speaking with many townspeople who all seem very supportive and excited about such a potential annual event. In fact, with each conversation, it seems like interest and excitement about Winter Heritage Day is growing stronger and stronger. When I look around at smaller surrounding communities that have town-based celebrations, I often question myself on why aren't we doing something like this year as well? Why don't we have a town celebration? Now is the time to change that and bring the community together for such an event. I am asking you to please support this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Arianna, Shannon, Priscilla, Jennifer, and Steve.
I got one question. So, uh, I don't know, Dan and Priscilla or somebody wants to answer. What, what exactly are you, are you asking the council, obviously for support, but is there any financial, I mean, are you asking for money? If so, how much?
So we know that this year's budget has already been set for the town, so we don't expect to dip into it financially to make it difficult for individuals or cause people to worry about their taxes going down because they supported this event and so on. Basically, we have talked to a couple of different individuals who advised that the overall event insurance should be covered under the umbrella policy that the town has. If we were to get a separate policy outside of the event, it would cost us probably close to seven hundred dollars. Is that about the quote? And that could be money that we could use for resources in other ways. We also would have to apply for town permits and things like that. So this year, we are just simply asking for the town to support us by providing the insurance for the event, allowing us to work with town individuals such as Nelson, who was a wonderful participant last year at the event. And, um, have this become a successful event. Um, we would want to have a meeting after the event is over to suggest that members of the community that have become more involved in maybe a council, um, individual be a part of for future events. So that way we can make an even bigger, better event that could have some finances provided for in the insurance budget to be aware. So that ends your question.
It did, it did for this year. Uh, one question I had that was actually to be fair, that you have looked into that and find out if that insurance, what does the current insurance we have cover that?
Yeah, so typically, obviously, the town has insurance. But we would probably have to purchase additional insurance to cover an event like this. And particularly if they're a bounce house, something Shannon and I talked a little bit. So there's a certain liability that goes with that. And while the vendor may have insurance for an activity like that, we would also want to have insurance as well. So, you know, it would not be an exorbitant cost, but it would be a little bit of an additional cost on our insurance line item.
The vendor that we do have for the bounce house, Sherry, who's been working on the insurance aspect of things, she talked to today. And they can add the town of Winthrop as the supporter and already has the document that names, um, the town of Winthrop as a co-sponsor. Yeah, additional, additional insurance. And that would be, you would get a certificate and that would be adding an additional cost to the town.
So that would definitely help, but we would still need a certificate just to cover the event itself from the, from the manual risk.
Did you have a question?
I mean, I think the event, I like the idea of the event. Uh, and I think that it's worth looking into. I would like to steer what the cost of the, our insurance is because that sometimes is scary, but I think that. I like it.
Yeah. I'm a supporter of the idea. I mean, I'd like to have something in town as well. I do have presentations that you and I talk, um, walk us around. The date. And I just was looking for a tip from Big's Bank. And why not be the biggest for folks from town being last weekend, rotate out of school or, you know, it's a long weekend, a holiday weekend and just, how did you guys come up with the date?
Um, that was a date that was set last year when Priscilla and Jim had a community event. And generally, when people go to an event, they look for it the same time next year. Or if they heard about it after the event and they were in town, they would go, oh, I'll have to mark my field or pay attention. So that's why that date was choose chosen. I know that that is Jim's preferred date. However, I think this is something that could also be revisited after this year's event and decide as a committee poll if that's how we want to continue to move forward or if we want to change that option.
Yeah, I was just wondering, didn't all just walk the town, because the council lost the empty little way.
Because I don't want something like the date to be in there or sure for the council.
Priscilla has some people on today, but truly, I just want to add a lot of people don't go away and a lot of people visiting our nears that they would need, uh, if we're available to spend.
Any other questions?
Uh, not so much a question, I guess, is, uh, well, well, actually, I'll start with this. You guys want to be recognized as a formal or do you want the town to adopt a formal committee in regards to this event, correct?
Right now, we're the formal committee. Obviously, we will accept other individuals that want to work on this event, volunteer to participate in the event, assist with the event and everything else. In the coming year, we want to see if there's other individuals and I feel that if the town is involved and we do have a responsibility to the town that somebody from the council would be the liaison to, like, maybe as well as other individuals that might want to join maybe in this event.
Okay, uh, so a couple of points on that. If one, if, um, financial accounts get opened, either you would act a form, probably an LLC or some form of nonprofit uh, to maintain your own community status.
Right.
You want to utilize town accounts, then it would have to be adopted through the community process that we already have in place. So then that would probably be applications. It's a formal committee that would require appointments and having that council liaison.
Right.
So that's something I should start.
And that's something you could talk about next year.
Yeah.
Um, this year, we've already thought about ways that we're going to handle it for the first year financially. Since we have shared organizations with either the range or the history center, we could probably set up a secondary account to ask our treasurer to mind, you know, to take in the money and hold it on our behalf.
So I would, yeah, just as a personal reference, I think it would be better off, uh, at least as I see it right now, not being an official town's committee necessarily, but which, like you said, the town agreeing to be a sponsor just actually.
They need to know.
So I would probably run the hand of one, well, uh, the lady, and she, you know, making sure that you have officers to bless. Me and stuff is being able to document that. Um, so I think, like, do you think it's a good idea? I would ask, uh, do we have any money at all to be able to?
Well, we didn't budget anything.
Right.
Um, we always end up the year at a one. And so it sort of depends upon how we're, I would say.
And then do you guys don't see financial support this year?
We won't turn down any of these financial support, I'll say that. But we have already, um, a target list of some, um, organizations and some editors that have, any town businesses that have said that they would support us. We don't have all the numbers put together yet until we have a yes or no.
Okay, yeah, and that's very.
And, um, but we do have one major one in the Quebec City's thing.
Perfect. And instead of solving this time between that and that, I would say, um, we suppose anyone else can ask.
Okay, um, I don't see a specifically named, a specific rider or a specifically named co-insure or an insurance form.
Can't hear you. I can't hear you.
I said, I don't see a specific rider or a specifically named co-insurance, uh, list on that form. Maybe we should say on that, but I feel like I'm good.
Well, it lists the, uh, the town of Winthrop as a certificate holder. The description says the certificate holder is additional insured, just what we want, to the extent coverage is provided in the following endorsement. And then the, uh,
I missed that one.
Yes, and then the insurance itself just is a million dollars per occurrence, which is standard for the insurances that we seek.
It's only a motion, um, that we do, um, endorse the proposal, um, of course, withstanding, uh, the ability to buy and develop insurance.
Oh. We'll move to a further the Heritage Day event for twenty twenty four.
As proposed, yeah, with insurance.
Okay. With Winter paying the insurance.
With our, we have our using our, if we have to add one guest.
Also. Alright, we have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor? All are in favor. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So looking forward to these events. Thank you. Moving to item one twenty one. Oh, yes, thank you. Brought my attention that we left out a quick comment at the beginning of this meeting. So at this time, I will open the floor and see any public comment, if you could come to the podium and state your name and your.
My name is Sherri Land.
Oh, there.
Come right up to the mic and tell us that we focus online, we hear you.
I just want to say that for many years I've worked with many municipal donation. I've been in insurance for over forty years, but that certificate was just a sample. Okay, well, we passed it around because the first one we got had no additional insured on it. It had no, and I, I said, no, this isn't going to work. This is only going to cover the bounce house company. So she gave it just as sample, this, the one you will actually get is going to be more specific with the dates. So, so on and so forth. The biggest thing I need to stress, however, is in the veteran or crop point. And that point we're trying to get because we're talking both launches and parking and having to get it all wrote down for the day, just like last year. So it was a little, but that wasn't mentioned, and I just, that's all part of the umbrella of the town. And I just wanted to say, I think you're going to have no cost on the main municipal because they're, they're absorbing, the bounce house company is absorbing the cost of the additional insured under her own insurance by adding the town of its request. Just want to make that clear. I don't think you should have a cost through main municipal, okay?
Sure.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Other comments? Public comment? Come up to the podium.
I just want to thank you guys. I just want to invite you all to come down on the thirty first of August. Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There anyone else in the audience that has anything else to comment?
But I know Bill Williams is here to speak about something specific, so Chief Brooks, if, Bill, if you want to come to the, to the podium and then, and then I know the chief has something he wants to share as well.
You know, back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we built subdivision Fox Run Lane in Winthrop. And we are fully intending on having the town take over the, the road maintenance. Okay, now we're ready to get our second order payment on and looking for the town to go ahead to take over that road maintenance.
And just so the councils are aware, I don't know if you saw the email that I sent earlier, the, and Bill's letter to us is in front of you. But we do have an ordinance, a road and street construction ordinance that speaks specifically to the acceptance of town roads. And under that ordinance, the first procedure in that process is to call a meeting at the site of the road. So we would go out and actually have a meeting at Fox Run Lane, uh, to talk about the proposal. And, uh, you know, one of the questions I think that would be bandied about at a meeting like that is whether or not the, uh, the road does meet the specifications as required by the ordinance and what evidence there is that, that it does. And so, uh, Dawn Emerson, our town planner, and I have talked about this over the last few days. And our, our suggestion to you is that we find a time and date, can have a special meeting out there. Um, obviously, all the property owners out there would be involved. We would post it so any. Um, obviously, all the, uh, property owners out there would be involved. We would post it so anybody from the public could attend. And we start that conversation so that you can start determining whether or not it's appropriate for the town to accept or. It would.
Uh, one question I have, you, uh, with the subdivision, you must, uh, you must have had the engineering drawn for that stuff.
Yeah, they told us where to put the call to him, Matt Washington, Will, and he, he did all the supervising on the job.
And, and that was all done specifically to towns?
Yeah, two towns.
Now specs.
Yeah. And, and, and our question at this point, simply because it's been nearly fifteen years since the road was installed, is the road may have been built at that time to specifications. Of course, it didn't get the final layer of pavement on it that was anticipated. And, and does the road still meet those, those specifications?
And we've talked to the pavement company that's going to permit it. They got to finish paving the calls to SAG. Okay. And they're not taking repairs to spots on the road. It's been fifteen years. Uh, we did put town water on that road. Dan's got some things he's got to do, raising, uh, raising the, uh, um, I'm sure what it is. He's going to raise them all up to the pavement where it needs to be. Um, we're really ready to finish that project. We've got.
He needs to Dan Wells.
Yeah, yeah, he's talking about raising manhole covers and so forth.
All that.
Uh, we've got five hydro stands.
Only the, yeah, there's one or two.
There it is.
Yeah. And we did set it up to town specs, and that's why we did town loads and all that stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I understand, frankly, this is a request to set a meeting, pass out.
What, and so it was just a, we didn't have time to put this on the agenda before it was posted. And so our suggestion was that, you know, Bill, just come and explain this request. And then our recommendation to you is we can set a time. And if you want to do that right now, we could do that. Or if you want us just to work with you to try to find a, a time and date that we work.
Dawn, check. There are even their members to be able to.
So, so under the process, the planning board is invited to that meeting, and so we will encourage them to attend. You know, this is unusual situation simply because the road was built fifteen years ago, and, and now fifteen years later, we're looking at possibility of acceptance.
Um, immediately following or prior to our second meeting in September, um, then we had this meeting as a road.
I don't know what day it was probably, when, when is your timeline? Why do you get this well, so the dates?
What I plan is, uh, we've got a couple lots getting ready to be sold in. We would like to do some of that, that work after we put driveways in and that kind of stuff. It's all better for the road. Have a little bit of planning on that. We'd like to pave it this fall.
So we're talking November, December, or maybe October?
Please, I'd like to see it paved in October. We'll probably pave it in October.
No, yeah, for us to see and act.
Yeah, so, so the, the meeting out there would be sort of the first step. And then you, you may want to engage in more deliberations. There may be more evidence that you would want from, from Bill. Oh, oh, no, I think, I think.
He's what, he wants that before. He wants to know what we're doing. Yeah.
So we spent sixty thousand dollars on pavement. I want to make sure the town's going to take it on.
So how about if, although we did agree on that, same meeting in August? How about the meeting that we did need out there, run for the whole second meeting on August?
It doesn't matter to me. I'm going to be around, so.
I'm just trying to find a date we can have this on.
Are they August nineteenth?
Just throw some dates.
Well, if, if August nineteenth works for you guys, we can go ahead and.
Works for me.
Pardon me with the planning board.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
And what involved?
Yeah, nineteenth would work for you, you think?
So they are. To the process. Planning board ultimately that's.
Still be at six o'clock.
Whenever you guys want.
Six o'clock.
I'm sorry, say that.
The planning board is the governing body, so that's.
No, no, it would be the council. The council is the body that accepts the roads. So we would provide you the information of what the planning boards. Well, no, not even, no. Yeah, so, so the planning board has approved the subdivision, and they approved the conditions, the, the specs uh, that were in there. So now this is just a matter of confirming whether or not the, the road still meets the town's specifications after fifteen years, and whether or not you, you, you deem it, uh, appropriate to accept it as a town roadway.
So if I should ask, can you, do you know, and can you inquire at this point, if we have to leave, any legal obligation to accept the road?
You do not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, with, and then the, the information that we would probably want, right, is A, the cost of what you're going to do right there. So we'll know right plus one moving forward, and then, uh, a previous uh, planning out of the original. Yeah. Well, so. Also specs.
Right, right, all the planning and stuff that we asked them up to in the first time.
Right.
So probably also going to want to know from the road, if you want, you know, you know, some idea of what's expected for future maintenance and planning.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you, Kim. There any other questions, comments around C D, again, this is. All the time.
Chief. I'm sorry, I don't want to take a lot of times the town manager suggested I speak. Uh, now I realize where the camera is, and I won't sit my foot down. But I'll stay a couple of rows back there, but. Uh, Dan, with fire chief, as you are well aware, a couple of things that we talked about today, um, at our director's meeting. Uh, in the past, we've had on Halloween evening, a trunk or treat at the fire station. And we batted it around a little bit, trying to move that more in town. And I think our decision is going to be to probably have what we did during COVID, the trunk or treat townwide on this, uh, town hall lane. Have people park in the football field parking lot and walk down through it, and then they could walk down the areas of town. I don't know if that requires a council motion to close that road. We'll probably look into that. If we need to, we'll come back. We obviously have a little bit of time. But that's something that we're want to promote, try to get people more in town where the fire station is off two o' two, it's a little bit farther away. And it worked very good during COVID. That was a drive-through deal where this one, we probably have it as a walkthrough. Um, people could come from either side of town, so forth and such. Uh, the other thing that, um, I mentioned that he thought I should make everyone aware of is last Sunday, not this Sunday, but last Sunday, we sent our fireboat, uh, rescue boat into the Ironman, uh, process. There was about half dozen different boats there. They did end up rescuing one person. Uh, the boat was pretty close to the stock line, and somebody had an issue right out of the gate. I think about seven or eight people total were brought out of the water by boats, but ours was very close to the beginning. So we had just the one. And then they asked us to stay on. The design of our boat has a flat front bow. You can drop in the water, and you can literally walk in and out right off the front bow. So they asked us to pick up the buoys for them because our boat could do it so much quicker than the other boats. Once the boat got back here, it went back into the station. Later that day, the ambulance got called out for someone with, um, I'm not sure if it was a sprain or a broken ankle, something along that line on one of the islands on Marana. So that was one of the keys to this boat, is it holds eight to ten people, eight technically, but I mean, it will hold the weight of ten. So we were able to put E M Ts, we were able to, uh, put firefighters on there, go out to the island, pull that person and somebody that was with them onto the boat, bring them back to the point and have them transported. So just a, a lot of times, the boat can be hit or miss in that. There's other boats out there on the lake, and they might get to an island. We can go out. This will be the fourth time we've used the boat this summer. One time was one of those deals where we just drove around looking for the emergency, and it was told a half an hour later that some other boat passing by had already picked the people up. And similar to another time, we were called up because there was some people trapped on a boat, and we went out to pick them up. And by the time we got ready to launch, they called back and said they didn't need us. So these were actually two times when we actually transported patients on the boat. So I mentioned at the meeting today, and you thought that you guys might be interested in that. It's like any other piece of equipment we have, you, you never a hundred percent sure uh, exactly how often you use it, but when you have it, you need to have the right equipment. So, um, other than that, I'll, you know, hang around for the discussion about the Aqua Funds, and if you have any good questions, let me.
Thank you. I do understand that the U C A did do a trunk or treat up in the football, you know, parking lot two, couple of weeks ago. It was very successful. It was a great location for that. Lots of kids came out, and it sounded like we had another full weekend with a float.
Yeah, that would be the attack too, would be honestly coordinating everybody in trucking in one spot or all.
Good. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment at this time? All right, with that, we move on to item one twenty one, consideration of awarding contracts in response to your requests for bids for heating fuel and gasoline twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. We're going to use two bids, one from Augusta Fuel Company, uh, with the number two heating fuel for three dollars and eighteen cents, and propane at one dollar and fifty eight, five eighty seven per gallon, uh, with A F C old tanks. And Winter Fuel Company for number two heating fuel at three thirty nine per gallon, and propane at one ninety ninety nine per gallon, uh, gas a whole unit twenty five cents about the oral terminal price company of delivery. There any comments or questions from?
I have a question. Did anybody, um, informed Winthrop Fuel that they lost the bid?
So I, uh, emailed them that we'd be meeting tonight, provided all the background information. I did not get any response.
I mean, would they have an opportunity to rebid it, I guess?
I, I would, I would not recommend that because I don't, I think that would, I think that would diminish the integrity of the bidding process and be allowing them to submit another bid to someone else's available. So I just know, you know, purchasing policy, if a local bidder is within five percent, then a preference can be given to a local vendor or certainly the low bidder. Uh, as I noted in the background memo, Winthrop Fuel's number two oil bid was almost seven percent higher, and the propane bid was, was twenty percent higher, um, than what A F C, uh, bid. So I would, uh, I would recommend we, we stick with our purchasing policy, reward the low bid for oil and propane to Augusta Fuel and the bid to gasoline to Winthrop Fuel.
I have a question. Uh, I'm sorry. Um, I, I, I understood that when the tanks are put in out here, Winthrop Fuel did the installing, owned the tanks. So how do we put another end to one of those tanks?
So, so those tanks serve the school.
Okay.
And so we don't pay for the propane that the town office has used at the school. I talked to Augusta Fuel. They said it's a simple matter, say, for instance, at the fire station. They're going to come in, empty out what's in the Winthrop Fuel tank, install their own tank, put that fuel back into the, uh, Augusta Fuel tank, and then, and then we'll alert Winthrop Fuel to come up and pick up their, their empty tank.
Perfect.
Yeah. Um, so I was just going to comment on questions, which is just saying, you know, signing up on the warrants and looking through the warrants, it is very clear that our, uh, one of the largest expenditures is also is proving that, you know, our, making sure that we are the best.
Along with that point, and don't mean to interrupt Jim, but, um, you know, reliance on these fuels is going to be diminished pretty significantly once we install the heat pumps. And that doesn't mean we won't be using fuel at all. But, um, we're going to be, you know, trading one, one heating source for another. Hopefully, starting this winter.
So I read this one somewhere in being from town, it's kind of like knowing that if it owns one of the people that's in town here their whole lives. I really am leaning towards, and this is my proposal, this is building up the number two. Like, I understand, we're talking like two percent of my goals, wavering. The obviously, the propane is twenty percent, so a bit higher, but, you know, one point nine percent. Giving awarding, because I know we have a policy, like, within five percent. I was considering at least letting them have the one that they will use the number two. Um, we kind of know we split basically. Let, uh, Augusta have the, the, look at the people, and have the number two, and the gasoline, because obviously, somebody else is offering that. But for this year, and we see where it goes, and maybe it'll be more competitive next year, but that's it. Um, I don't believe, there are all vessels have been much here down, as they were up in, you know, like, the taxpayer, but I just, that's my thought.
Uh, this question is directed to Chief Brooks, uh, from an emergency facility standpoint. Four o'clock in the morning, uh, banana hiring for six hours pumping, uh, out of fuel. Does this present a problem with you? With the convenience that Winthrop Fuel provided with having access to all of their pumps and whatever you needed?
So they did have attention to what we read, and, and you're talking about not buying gasoline or fuel from Winthrop Fuel?
We would be paying gasoline from Winthrop Fuel.
Yes.
I don't know what you're saying. What about diesel last night?
See, the diesel, you know, we have no other vendor.
Yeah, uh, there's, there's no place but Winthrop Fuel for diesel, unless we go to, from other farms.
Do we, we did that, like, do this?
No, because there was no one else. I mean, we tried that last year, no one else.
Set over rack, right, sir?
It, it's, it's just whatever the, the price is.
Yeah, so I don't think we would have any ton of footers with that, because in the past, they've used generators to keep us running and going. Same as, uh, the fuel down, the gasoline mill, and one truck runs a gasoline in that generator. So these guys would be good. So I don't think it would affect gasoline and diesel fuel.
Yeah, so the gasoline actually gets delivered to our fuel depot. And then that's where public works, fire department, police department, so forth, go and refill their vehicles.
Uh, question I have, I, we talked last budget season about, uh, looking into uh, combining bids between the town and the school for increased buying power. Did we look into that at all? Where, um, where do we leave that?
It's, the, the school is comfortable with their arrangement with Winthrop Fuel.
Okay, so there, there, that's, that's what.
We're not interested in competitive bidding, but, but just purchasing their fuel from Winthrop Fuel. Yes.
So they don't do competitive bidding on anything?
Not, not for fuel.
I, I would make a note two cents of it. Is a school buys their fuel, like, a thousand gallons, truffles, whereas the town's buying hundred gallons here, five hundred gallons there. What, then you got to go to ten different buildings to do the library, and the annual spy environment, hundred gallons here, twenty gallons there. So that price is going to be higher than drop ten thousand gallons and drive off. So I think the school probably wouldn't want to go with us because it's only going to drive their price up a little bit. Because now whoever's bringing the big fuels is also going to do all the whole stuff if it wasn't outside competitor with their fuel. Just a, just a point I would make. My, my brother used to work for Artic Oil, and he made that point to me once. You're not going to get the same price, hundred gallons of whack versus ten thousand gallons. Whatever it's worth.
Chair, under the motion.
Just, um, move to approve contract with Augusta Fuel Company for number two oil and propane for two thousand twenty four, twenty five.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? I have two. Great motion passed. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve a contract with Winthrop Fuel Company for gasoline for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. All in favor? All in favor? Moving on to item one twenty two, consideration of awarding a contract in response to a request for bids for winter sand. And we received five different bids, uh, one from Mentor Construction, seven dollars per yard for town pickup. Blue Rock Earthworks, I believe you received that from them last year, uh, our sand, uh, at seven eighty five per yard for town pickup, eleven per yard delivered, C H Stevenson, Stevenson for seven dollars a yard for town pickup, twelve point five yards, uh, per yard delivered, who be your construction at eight forty per yard with town pickup, and thirteen forty per yard delivers. And elementary field excavation at seven fifty a yard for town pickup, and eleven fifty per yard delivers. Yes, go ahead.
We're keeping up this, our, the, this particular sand roads. Roads. I don't think some of this news, but I still never, ever get up, just based on the cost, do we just put that in there's a earmark that happens, prices always?
Just give the council options.
Okay.
I, I mean, our recommendation is that we go, in this instance, with Elmery Field for the, for the amount delivered.
I'm disagreeing, I just, I just, I'm kind of wondering why we ended.
In, in, in the past, in the, yeah, in the past, that's what the town has always done, this past year was the first year that we had some, some sand delivered, so. Just as a point of comparison, it gives you some options to, to deal with, but, but our recommendations, we go with Maryfield, because again, they are within five percent of the low bid, and, and, and this is critically important, the quality of their sand is really good, so we had some issues this past year, and uh but not when we've used Maryfield sand, so. For those two reasons, we're recommending that, that we feel the important event. Well, if, if you guys wanna do that moving forward, we will certainly do that.
Except the, the eleven fifty a yard delivered. Sand price from uh Larry Maryfield excavation.
Okay, so second, James. All right, all in favor? All in favor, Stacey? Moving on to item one twenty-three, consideration of order twenty twenty-four, actually I agree. Providing a heat pump installation for a primary facility, release purchase financing with Andrew Scoggins Bank. Uh Anthony, do you wanna go over that a little bit?
Sure, so you may recall, uh when you approved the contract with Dave's Appliance to convert our facilities to uh heat pumps, that the balance of the cost that was not funded by efficiency mainly base and by our fifty thousand dollar grant from the Community Resilience Program would be financed through Efficiency Main's Green Bank. So there are two participating banks in that program, one of them is Andros Goggins Bank, which is our depository. But that program offers low interest municipal financing, and, and it's meant to be budget neutral, that is, the amount of money that we would save in energy cost would then be applied to refining, to, to repaying the financing uh over time. So because of the amount of the lease, Bernstein sure said a legal opinion is needed. Uh and so they presented us with an order from the council specifically authorizing the financing. So the terms, which I've included in your packet, is for a nine-year payout, and the total amount to be financed would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and change at an interest rate of six point eight five percent. Now.
That's a lot.
It, it is a lot, but um, but interest rates have increased uh in recent times, so. Mike Ketchin, the owner of Dave's Appliance, has assured us confidently that we can, that we will realize twenty thousand dollars a year in energy costs, so again, we would apply that savings to the, to the refinancing of this lease payment.
How much is the, the cost per year for that?
Uh, let me look and see.
One time we did talk about this, I minded it.
Well, and so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, that's what we did.
And so that is an option as well, now, we don't have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in ARPA cost, but it gets us pretty close, and then we've, and then we've still got the money that we set aside in the uh assigned fund balance last year. And so if we just wanted to, to strictly cash fund this between those two sources, then that is an option. Um Steve McDermott uh called me earlier today, and I, I missed his call, but he was telling me the reason he was calling is he, he had sort of a similar thought, that we could reduce the financing cost, and then use the energy savings that we would realize from the installation of heat pumps towards some of the projects that, that are on your ARPA list. Some of them are, some of them are. So, no, Andros Goggins has done that, and so we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be out any money as a result of this. But to answer your question, Linda, the annual uh payment on the lease finance would be uh shy of twenty-one thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not in favor of, of leasing this, we, we need to either put a combination of, I think, the ARPA funds, if you wanna use it, and fund balance. I mean, that's saving us money, that's a lot of money for an interest every year.
Can I make a motion?
Where's the, where's the proposal for the actual heat pump, is that?
So, 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 so that's, yeah, that's not in there, because that's something that, that was previously.
Okay, that's right, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, Bruce, go ahead.
I uh, I move to approve um using ARPA funds for partial payment of the heat pumps as opposed to leasing it through Andros Goggins Bank.
So, so, so let me, let me just get some clarity here, so. Um the next item we were gonna talk about, the amount of money that we have available in ARPA funds to appropriate is a hundred and seven thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty cents. Is it the intention of the council to appropriate the totality of that towards this project? Okay, yes, yes. And then in addition, that paid the balance with the uh monies that were the surplus monies from last year that had been uh assigned to the designated fund balance.
Can I revise that motion then, and present a new one?
Okay.
Uh I move to approve um using or utilizing ARPA funds for partial payment of the heat pumps and utilizing uh general funds on balance to approve the balance of the heat pumps and um uh finance it ourselves.
Second.
Second.
And we have a motion to approve using ARPA funds as a partial payment and remaining balance on the pump balance. Uh the motion by Bruce and a second by Linda, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you. Moving on to item one twenty-four, we can break that.
Yeah, unless, unless you guys wanna hear about some other projects that uh, you know, that are sort of radar, if you will.
You got the wrong.
Okay.
We don't have any money left, do we? No, I, 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 I wouldn't even do it if you have any money left. Yeah, next time, yeah, if we get any more.
Okay.
Right, so we'll strike that. Moving on to item one twenty-five, especially in the salaries, so I invited to the council or steel, as this was the request to discuss. Do we wanna say more about it?
I moved the table discussion on item one twenty-five to a prudent date.
Second.
All right. First, can we all enter the table? All in favor? Item consideration, what is the name of the municipal association candidate slate? We have this uh ballot right here for uh the nominating committee, Justin Corrigan, for the Monmouth Town Manager as Vice President in one term. Executive Committee members, three years term, there are only three, we vote for three. David Seer, Frenchville Town Manager, Michelle Verula, Polo. Paul, select person for the town of Bethel, and Matthew Garseig, Oldman Town Manager. Is there a, a motion?
Motion to approve the proposed slate of candidates in item one twenty-six, main municipal association.
I'll second.
Any discussions?
A little bit of discussion, um. The, I'm trying to find the page one over here. So is this something that we vote as a council?
That's correct.
One vote, that's the total.
And then we'll sign and submit it.
So there's only one choice for the vice president that through. You know why? Yeah, I got. And just after the uh whole day in discussion, my confidence is, my confidence level is a little low.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to approve the casting of the Winthorpestown votes for eminently Vice President and committee members, all in favor? All are in favor? We'll pass this around and we can sign that. Uh item one twenty-seven, consideration of approval of minutes of the July first meeting report council meeting.
To prove that's second.
Right, all in favor? All in favor? Item one twenty-eight, consideration of disbursement warrants.
I didn't see the nice.
Just approve the disbursement warrants as presented.
All in favor? All in favor? Item one twenty-nine, consideration of recommendations from the委员会.
Don't, don't have any recommendations after this time. Believe that is. Do you have any feedback for any of the main municipal committees? Yeah.
I just spoke of once a day, um. That is something that we should have on our agenda, Minister.
Yeah.
The committees, yeah.
Yeah, we need roles and responsibilities, yes.
Discuss that.
Yes.
Kind of close the loop, because there may have any sense that happens.
Uh they had been scheduled, I think, for August seventeenth, but that was prior to them voting to suspend their operations.
Well, I, I had had a conversation with them, mostly because I know them. And I did tell them to, and they agreed to keep working.
Okay.
So then theoretically, at least, they're still moving on, but they still have objections.
He did.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
I, I'm unsure of Mr. Pelletier's status.
He's left.
I'm unsure of his status.
All right.
I think he resigned.
I just have to get, you know, I haven't waited to, you know, assume yet, so I'm you know. And for some.
That is coming, the update to those who guess, so, which is about the, the next meeting, we're about to get agenda.
We get to be the cheerleader during, gotta get him back on.
Uh last thing, I don't know, are you gonna talk about this? Like this up?
Um no, please go ahead.
This is up to uh anyone in the audience who are online, the annual report was published uh through the town. First time in a long time, and uh it covers everything from the audit, financial statements, and updates from all the departments. So um really great work, I believe, from the staffs.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
First report since two thousand seventeen, it will be, it will be an annual occurrence moving forward.
These um annual reports, I just came from them from yearly. It's pretty funny, and the, and the fire station, but we're talking sort of yearly. They look that pretty now, they were much smaller, but that's pretty.
There's a box by the front door, and these are available at the sun office and the library.
The library. Police station.
All right, great.
I have something to.
Okay.
Can I do this one?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Uh we don't know what I'm gonna do yet, but I can just comment during the voting.
Go ahead.
Okay, we don't have to respond though.
What?
Go ahead.
We don't have to respond to this.
I, I was looking at that road paving, uh road acceptance request, and I've been thinking for a long time that perhaps the town ought to consider not accepting any more roads that new government should be left to their own, you know, I will frame that around road standards, if even one half road standards, but we shouldn't accept any roads when you look at our paving expenses. Um, you know. Um and maintenance expenses, and same expenses, and everything else. I don't know why private road associations couldn't handle the issues.
Thanks, Randy. All right, Bruce, in the air.
Um in fact, I have sent your attention, um I received the paving schedule, Wrangler Road is set to be paved the week of the twelfth, I believe. I also brought to your attention through a separate email, the addition to Wrangler Road of speed bumps, speed humps, or speed valleys um to slow traffic down going up the hill. I mean, sign deterrence is great, but I think there has to be some type of physical impairment to slow people down, at least in two locations of Wrangler Road.
I uh, I can't recall exactly who I consulted with, did I talk with you about that, chief?
We had a, we had a conversation on the uh need or of need to pull.
Bruce, I'll have to go back through my notes, but, but I talked with Public Works People, Chief School District, and there wasn't a lot of support for that, just because of um the wear and tear on the buses going over those, those speed humps.
If we put a speed table in, I think it would eliminate a lot of that, any kind of additional damage on the buses.
Yeah.
Um I don't know how it would fare with the, uh maybe it would help the electric buses run a little bit. But I, I think if deterrence other than a sign that coasts your speed, which nobody pays attention to, uh and the lack of available enforcement up there, um just deters going up that hill for a lecture.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to call our, I'm gonna have to call our paving contractor tomorrow, just see if that's a possibility, and then what the cost would be, just because there would be additional.
I know that there's a lot of problems inside the main living, and those speed tables are more frequent, was prevalent down there. And they aren't anywhere near as violent with street bumping.
There's real dangers actually made, uh people pushing saw, they ask few investigations uh on the table, because of the danger for how they use these.
Send this pertaining to roads.
Well, no, when he was just talking, yeah, it is changing roads, I just think, I don't understand the question about the development that wants us to take over the roads, so that was like, he was saying something like fifteen years ago, so what, what's that process? They build that and then agree that the town was gonna take it over. So.
This is gonna segue into what I wanted to mention a few things.
Okay.
So it looks like our ordinance uh was updated last in nineteen ninety-five. Um and there was a process, a lot of towns have a process of taking over road ownership. Um I think the most one, the most recent, Maple Ridge. I'm not sure. It's been done, it's been here, um and it looks like in June of nineteen ninety-five, it looks like the planning department has a duty to make sure that it's not a burden for any unnecessary partnerships. Yeah, I have to go through this, but I was wanting, maybe we could look at updating.
Well, I mean, I, I think a lot of this conversation right now is, is uh maybe a bit premature, until we get to the meeting of, of the nineteenth, and let's hear.
Well, I think there's some comments.
For, I think, right, two. But my guess is when they did make the development, they had talked.
So I guess my question, just sitting there listening today, is why now? It's been how many years, only a year?
I mean, I think.
The additional housing.
They're finishing up.
In their, now.
They're looking at doing a substitution.
Would be, they would probably have the funding to do the second coat. And the upgrades to make the roads that.
Upgrades on my roads, why I'm getting my house these years, but I'm not gonna get it. But I'm wondering now, like after all these years, we've been doing this, it just, some of the bikes, like sitting up here, and I'm like, why? Now, that just seems really strange to me, and will that trigger other people to be like, hey, well, they did it for them, I want it for me, and I didn't stop.
Other towns use it as a way to bring the potential of development into their town, I've printed out the ordinance just so we could.
I do, I understand, but that's not, that's been there for a very long time.
Right, right.
I mean, I, I do remember a discussion about it when they brought it up, that eventually they're gonna come back to the town, I, I think that was the discussion. But we have to have a discussion, because there's other roads in the, in the town that wanna be, you know, the town to take it over, and the question becomes is, if these roads are not getting plowed by the town, I have a problem with a hundred percent of the tax, you know, them paying a hundred percent versus, you know, they're not getting services, they can't get services, then to me, there has to be some consideration for that, I think.
So.
Because.
Sixty thousand, you're borrowing that, I don't know, I couldn't understand them. So he's gonna put the sixty thousand in, then we're gonna say, oh yeah, he's my own.
Then it's our problem.
And then do we have to reimburse him for that?
No, no, but moving forward.
No, moving forward, it's our problem.
Alright, so I was just curious. Thank you, David.
They're not getting a service that everybody else is getting.
Long anticipated town manager's report.
Short, short and sweet, Anthony, it's hot in here.
So, if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Chief uh, Berlin to come to the podium because I asked him during this report to talk about an idea he has for studying police department consolidation between.
Moving, moving forward, I would give my attention as I think we're missing a role on some issues as far as, uh. Utilizing resources, better using resources, building the two departments. Um, so in in order to to move this forward, I want to put a study committee, a feasibility study committee together to determine, um. The pros, the cons, um, potential savings, um. And just empowering the committee to take a close look at what um, the benefits would be to consolidate and work on with the police department under one, uh, one roof, so to speak. And so I, in putting this committee together, uh, I was looking for, um. A member from the council here, I don't know if you can select one along with. Couple of citizens from the public, from both towns. Police department personnel, um, and the town managers to work on this committee to to really take a close look, analyze the possibilities. Um, of of doing what I think is a right move under both of these communities by consolidating service.
That is great leverage, Jim, I like it.
And then also I would just say adding to that charge would be the thought of future like housing, like building a station on the route four two and half and one to Patamon.
I think Bruce and I would be happy to serve, you just said, I'd like to, I'd like to serve on it too, if we can consolidate, I like.
When are you looking at the feasibility study?
I would like to, I'd like to put the committee together so we can get started on it as soon as possible.
Do you guys? No, I didn't mean, he just said he wanted to do it, I did too, so.
The 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 Monas Police Department was uh, added on to it, this new building, so I just didn't want, yeah, well. Um, it's not planned for our purpose. That's why we have to bring all our business over to Winthorpe, we can't process them.
I mean, you should limit it if other counselors have an interest in sitting on that. I mean, to be quite honest, if other counselors have an interest in sitting on that, I think it's probably all the better. If they're gonna consolidate, so I mean, if you, I would like to definitely attend the meetings, so.
Keep keeping in mind, there's at least three of us that I think if we elected, I, I would like to. We might, we might all find ourselves not here.
Does he need, does he need our approval?
Would it, would it be open to the public or would these, because we have three counselors on this floor.
Well, no, a corps is four, so so that's not an issue, and and I would recommend not having these as public sessions simply because they need to be work sessions.
And the 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 charge would be to just be a feasibility, this not go into contracts, not going into developments, not going into anything like that, feasibility. Doesn't, does this committee feel like this is where going the next step?
We, I don't really study for it, one, one other question that kinda, timing goes along with it as far as public safety goes. What about uh, fire, is this, would this be a time to uh, at least an initial discussion on fire?
I s- I spoke with uh, Chief Brooks about that not all that long ago, he was not hot on the idea, he didn't think other churches would be as well, simply because of the um, the response of nature. But 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 I thi- but I think that's a, that's a discussion for.
It's a tiny issue, I mean, when you're, when you're at a fire, it's.
I do.
I think I just want, one more, one more item I wanna bring up is tomorrow night is national night out.
Yes.
And we'll free burgers, free hot dogs. Uh, everybody's welcome to come over, we start at five tomorrow. And run until seven, seven thirty, we'll run out of food. That's on the fire, uh, police station, yes.
So I I would, um, I'd I'd be remorse if I didn't mention, because I know our library director who's online uh, was eager to talk about this during the discussion, but it is likely that we're gonna need to find some additional funds for the elevator project, just as a contingency at this point. And so I just wanna put that on your radar, we still have the monies that we're gonna be dipping into for the uh, for the heat pumps, uh, that project is now underway, and they anticipate having it done uh, by December, so.
Seeing overages in the future?
No, no, but but we just need to be prepared for that, so uh. It looks like Richard just.
Richard, are you nervous? Are you nervous about the elevator overrun?
Uh, no, I wouldn't say nervous, but um. We, uh, you know, we had talked about during the budget process with the council, um. Some things that I noticed, uh, which sort of have have come true, so we started demoing the walls, um, at the end of last week. For example, and you know, there's some electrical that is there that we had no way of knowing was was there until we demoed the walls. And then, of course, uh, the new elevator is bigger than the old one to meet the code, and there is a substantial amount of HVAC, including um, an actual heating unit, that is where the new elevator will be. Uh, and HVAC, you know, he- heating and plumbing is not cheap, so, uh, currently the company H E Callahan is working with a couple subs, HVAC and and electrician uh, to to get me some numbers. I am meeting with the site supervisor and the architect tomorrow. I'm not sure if they'll have numbers for me yet, but, um, you know, we need, we need to work through those things, and then there's also i- i- I don't know how familiar you guys are with that that area downstairs, uh, where the new elevator is going. But there is a support beam that is sitting right outside the elevator, and right now, um. You know, if you're, if you're using a wheelchair, you kinda go to one side of it. Uh, one thing that was a little bit overlooked is that the the new size of the elevator is gonna block that. That means that that post has gotta go, and you either need to put a new post in or do some structural work uh, with the beams, so uh, the architect's gonna look at that for me, I think he's already been looking at it, and hopefully I'll get an update on that tomorrow, but obviously, when you add all those things up, it's, um, you know, it's, it's going to cost uh, something and and unfortunately, there's not really, you know, these aren't exciting things that we wanna do, but you have to do them to stay the code and um, there's really no sense in putting in a new elevator if somebody in a wheelchair is using it and they can't get past that post, so that has to go. Um, and, you know, really that's, you know, we have a couple people who who sometimes like to get downstairs or go to events and elevators, that's about ninety-five percent of that elevator usage, so, um, that that does need to be done.
Is it wood or in concrete support beam?
It's a con- it's a concrete post.
Question, Richard, um, when you, um, so this is starting, correct?
Yeah, so I, actually, real quick, if you want, I can just give you an update of where we're at, just like a one minute update, so, um, last.
Yeah.
Just want, yeah, yeah, give the update, but but make it very brief here.
Yep, okay, so last Monday, the twenty ninth, um, they mobilize, set up the, um. Equipment and and the staging to um, demoing the slab, and they hope to pour a new slab at the end of the week, and then begin framing the new shaft uh, the week after, and then I just kinda wanted to, I I know, uh, Anthony said December first, which is probably the case. Uh, they're aiming for the end of October, November first, give or take two weeks, which would put us in mid-November, given some of the stuff we've run into. Um, I'd say December first is probably, um, our, uh, our goal, so that that's kind of the forty-five second update of where we're at, what we've done so far.
Richard, didn't we have community firm or architecture firm come in and do this? All the previous, yeah, design or call, you know, for the RFP and all that stuff?
Yes.
And nobody picked up on this post.
Architects are rarely responsible for any mistakes.
I mean, uh, it just seems like pretty, I mean, I don't know what situation you're talking about exactly, but it seems like it would be a pretty obvious issue.
So, I'm not knowledgeable enough to know, you know, what he would be responsible for and not, Anthony and I could look at the contract, but you know, I think the law states that you need like thirty-three inches or something like that of of a through pass, I think it does technically meet that by like a centimeter. But if you, if you look at it, and you were sitting in a wheelchair to get through there, your knuckles are gonna rub on that post, so maybe it does technically meet the law, it would, I think it would not behoove us to keep it, though.
Isn't this the exact reason why we hired the architect and?
We had this issue when, this is about the, the, the actual. I could have sworn we discussed this issue and they were going to make sure all of those specifications, I mean, it's unacceptable. That that's not, that has not happened.
I mean, at this point.
I mean, I don't care. Well, there is, I mean, there, I mean, to me, it's not, I mean, who's looking at this stuff? I mean, I understand that we're not, you know, you know, when you hire somebody to do this, this should be done. I mean. You're paying. Exactly, I I, this is not okay with me, this is not okay at all.
Well. Architect surveys work, makes up the drawings, and then the contractor works according to those drawings. And if you find something the architect didn't anticipate, you usually find that the architect hadn't escaped laws. So it that, it's pretty rare to be able to back charge an architect. And it's not the contractor's fault.
Well, I I think that the contractor bears some responsibility for it, I mean, this is a quarter of a million bucks.
Yeah, it is.
And I also like.
I also think that this is gonna, that settles being a concrete support post is gonna be a significant amount of money.
But what we're thinking is, it it's still within legal specs, if we leave, don't touch it right now, it's still within legal specs.
I'd have to check on that, yeah, I mean, I think it probably is, but I, I would highly suggest not keeping it, because like I said, it is tight, um, and I think you're I I think you would have unhappy, uh, people that are using that, uh, especially the type, you know, the handicap people that are using it. Wouldn't be very happy, um, I will say though, like the ar- the architect, the contract that we chose to go with is an all inclusive, it's not like by the hour or what we need to add. Um, so what we, what we've paid him, like, this additional engineering, there's no extra charge for that. Obviously, there's a charge to do the work, but if he had engineered that and put it in the RFP theoretically, the bid would have been higher by this amount, you know, regardless, so I just wanna say, I don't, we're not we're not gonna pay extra for the engineering or the architect for this error.
It would have changed our thought process potentially as far as investing.
Well, this is, yeah, this is called the punch list, uh, privy, okay, and, um. You know, it's great work by a general contractor to come in, get low bids secured, and then say, oh yeah, by the way. You know, you've got a three foot wide support beam here, and we're gonna have to remove it, you know, that's not cheap.
Yeah, I wanna say too, it was the only bid, we had, we had trouble getting anybody to bid on this project. Just, just one quick thing, I'm not gonna like move forward if they come in tomorrow and say, hey, this beam is fifty grand to move, you know what I mean, like, if they say it's five or six grand, we've already budgeted for that, like, like, we do have a an overage contingency, we'll move forward, but if it's significant and exorbitant, I I'm obviously gonna meet with Anthony and then we'll come back to you, we're not just gonna plow ahead if it's, you know, gonna put us in a, a big red hole.
The overage contingency, uh, seems like it's getting eaten up pretty quickly.
Yes.
Probably.
Thank you, Richard.
Yep.
Okay, so let's talk about, uh, now for the long awaited town manager report. So a week from today, we will do, uh, public works director interviews, we have four applicants. Um, any of whom I think could do the job, it's just a matter of who we think would be best uh, to do the job, so we'll be, uh, working on that a week from today. Uh, I sent an email earlier today about, uh, the legislative policy committee priorities, uh, from the MMA, so take a look at that, because if you have thoughts as to what our legislative priorities would be, I'd be interested in in hearing those and trying to incorporate those or advocate for those, uh, with the M P C.
Well, one, one thing I know that is potentially, I have to look at the issue myself, because I don't know what the ins and outs are, I wa- I was not, not involved in it this year, but the tribal bill will be back and the but one of the things with that tribal bill is, they want sovereignty over the rivers, we have municipal discharges in those rivers. And I guess I'd like to know what the potential cost is to Winthrop if we cannot discharge, if that bill goes forward, which I know they're gonna put it in.
Just talk about that offline.
But anyway, so if you have legislative priorities, let me know, and I'll see if we can advocate for those. Uh, just a reminder, uh, to use your dot gov email addresses uh, so that people can get accustomed to that, I mean, there's, there's gonna be a certain period in time where we're gonna have to pull the plug on the dot org simply because those do not have the level of security that are dot gov addresses. So, as you're emailing, as you're emailing me, for instance, you know, use the dot gov. Um, everyone knows nomination papers are out, those are due by September the sixth. Um, and then lastly, uh, my daughter is arriving from, uh, from New York tomorrow, and so I will be in and out, working a little bit from home while she's here this week, uh, so, but if you need me call, text, email, I'll respond, and and then next week, just as FYI the annual conference of main town and city managers is from Wednesday through Friday. Uh, so, that's always a good experience, because the last time I attended one of their, um. Training conferences, uh, I learned about the opportunity that led to one point one million dollars in federal funding for communication, so. I guess, uh, it's always a good input to them, that's my report.
Good question, Chris, where are we at with our whole real estate saga?
Good, good question, we actually met today with Darren Heishi, who is our real estate broker. Uh, of the initial ten, uh, properties that we foreclosed on, we managed to finagle all of the payments that were due from seven of those. And so of the three remaining properties, one is a vacant property. Uh, one is a mobile home, so we, we own the mobile home, but not the land underneath it. And so we think that the per- the person who owns that property may be interested in having the mobile home to sort of rent it out. And then we have one home, uh, where the lady is infirmed and in assisted living care. The lady is infirm and in assisted living care situation. She's. Deeply, deeply in debt and her power attorney has already told us, sell it. So, uh, so that's good. And, um, on Friday, we managed to get all of the taxes due on five winter center road. Yeah, and, and that was a, you know, that was fourteen thousand plus dollars for that one. So, uh, corresponded today with, uh, with our attorney, and so we have a plan moving forward, so. We've pretty much taken care of all the properties that we foreclosed on this year. Now we're going back and looking at some of the properties where. The documentation may be, um, there may be gaps in the documentation. But we've come up with a, a plan for our attorney on moving forward with those and, uh. We've had interest from at least one of butter for one of those properties who's interested in buying, so, so that's giving us the, just to push forward.
How long does it, how, what is the, uh, period that you wait before you. Put a legal on a property for, and pay taxes? Just curious.
Oh gosh, no, I'm not, I'm not the tax collector, uh, but, um. If you do not pay your taxes within eighteen months, that's gonna lead us to another problem.
Just curious, cause I, uh, recently I've been, um, having some. My taxes went up at my camp at like seven, six thousand percent. And, uh.
Must be some, some really magnificent, uh, upgrades.
I've been fighting with them, it's in Burlington, and I've been fighting with them, uh. About the fact that it's gone up so high, it's, it's not, there's no. Building or anything on it. They got, they've got reassessed and. So we, uh, they've agreed to for a tax repayment, but in that period that's since, uh, April. Uh, between April and now, they've already given me a thirty-day lien notice. I'm just curious, is that it's.
I'm not aware of, of, of anything like that. That's thirty days? That doesn't sound right.
Yeah, they, they've gotta file a lien if I don't pay my tax thirty days, and they send notifications to.
There's, there's stat- in, in statute, I believe, there is a, isn't that in statute that what?
All the, all the timelines are prescribed by them.
Yeah, the timelines are. I just wanna say, you know, I, I know I told this to Shannon, I had, had this conversation with Anthony. People better be prepared for the reval here in Winthrop, because we, they just went through one in Wayne. My taxes went up sixty percent. Or my, my valuation, sixty percent. It went from thirty-six on vacant land, that's half. That's got half swampland to eighty-four thousand dollars. So if you think that we're gonna get out of this with, uh, twenty percent like they were talking about, we're not. I think it's gonna be one hell of a lot higher than that, so be prepared.
Bruce, did you, did you get that task committee straightened out? It used to be Bruce.
Tax comment. No, we have two members, we need two more.
The tax assessment.
I understand that we're under a timeline, but it's very difficult to find somebody that wants to serve on.
It's only a timeline if we get a case, then, then it becomes a crime.
Absolutely, but I anticipate with the reeval.
That's true, but it's a couple of years into the future.
Stand there, but I hope you have that set.
I serve on the, I serve on that board where I live, and, and the only reason I agreed to is I think we, we never meet, so.
Alright.
Did you ever find out who was cutting on that town lot at the end of Mall Street?
I have no.
Got some lefts?
We own a lot of the end of Mall Street, I'm right inside. And somebody had been cutting trees off. They built a new house a lot before that. And somebody had been cutting the trees off and clearing the Mall Street lot. That the town owned, so I was just kinda wondering who, you know.
Alright. Now, a few questions of the public question of this meeting, thank you everyone who's in attendance. Just a moment here, going to the executive session.